I don't know about A's anymore. Might get a B minus.
All right, well, we will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Any changes or adjustments to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
East Sac County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We'll take a minute now for public input on non-agenda items.
I just wanted to say that a couple of light poles on the west end of the parking lot out here would be really good. It gets really dark down at the very west end of the parking lot there. And if you leave here tonight and go out back there, you could probably tell that.
You're talking by the driveway? Yeah.
As you're turning in.
Yeah, well, okay, yep.
I've talked with the city about it, so we're kind of trying to figure out what to do. It would have been nice to have it done before it got dark already.
You can sit out there in your car in the very back of the parking lot, have all kinds of fun in the dark.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to secretary report.
So you got the fund balances in there. They're still continuing to kind of hold that trend year over year. One thing, a couple of things that I was going to say. The big jump from month to month is just the big annual payments that we get for property tax. Couple of things that I've looked into as far as our PEPAL and SAVE funds go, capital projects. Comparing that to the report that we got when the debt was taken out. They estimated that we should have about $2 million cash reserve right now. And we're sitting at about 3.2, so, you know, doing better than they had originally projected, so that's good to know. ESTER 3, that's the funds for the air conditioner that we did at the elementary. That finally opened up for reimbursement, so I submitted that application. So we might see that before the end of the year. Don't know how fast it'll turn that around. And then the last thing I was going to mention is the concession stand profit. So this year, we took back control of the concession stand and we made about $10,000 in profit. So half of that's going to get shared with the groups that worked the concession stand and the rest of it's going to stay in the activities account for us to kind of divvy up for people for uniforms and stuff like that. So that's good to have that money back and not controlling it. So that's all I got.
Any other questions? All right. I don't think we have any correspondence.
No correspondence.
All right, so then we will move on to administrative reports.
Yeah, I felt like I had a long one this month, so I'll try to just carry this one up here all night. First, our Iowa performance profile, the state report card was made public. And the elementary team was really thrilled, excited, relieved to receive the rating that we received. Just kind of note, we had a growth of over 20 points on the score from last year and went from priority to commendable in one year. So our leadership team met and we just noted that the work that our teams are doing is the right work. And we're going to continue to set those learning goals and use data to adjust instruction to continue to improve. We know it's a continual process, but we were really excited when Mr. Eppert came over. And we're planning ways that we can celebrate, so. So some other data, PBIS behavior data. Our goal is 85% of our students with zero or one. We're currently sitting at 88%. And we just continue to work to do implement management, supervision strategies to reach that goal. So I also have just some tier two behavior data there. It's a continual process. Our strat two, special education room, I just have some music data. So in this room, this is a new room for us this year. And it's used for specially designed instruction for our students that have behavior goals. And we utilize it for gen ed students as well. Kind of how we utilize, we talk about, we provide a space for kids that might be just too dysregulated to learn in their classroom. And so if they're too dysregulated to learn in their classroom, then we have a space where they can stay at school, do some learning. And then we have a process, a place where they work to earn their way back into class. And that's, again, our system is evolving. Our usage is actually up in that room as we continue to evolve. Just how do we use it effectively? But it seems to be, it's overall been a very good thing to have. So, yeah, yes. We stay at school. We have two places where we can learn. You can learn in your classroom with your friends, or you can be learning in Ms. Moore's room. So we're all learning. Conferences, we held those at the end of October and we had 97, we had conferences with 97% of our students' parents. And those nights of conferences, I told the teachers, I mean, they just overall went extremely well. And this was the first time since I've been a principal in six years that I haven't had to sit in a conference because it was going to be some kind of confrontational. So lots of good conversations, I don't know, just overall went well. Lots of good conversations, necessary conversations. So, yeah. Elementary attendance, we have, with our new Senate File 2435, we have developed an attendance system to not only follow the law, but also we want to be proactive in helping students attend school. So we have our attendance team. We have the members there. Heather's a big instrumental part of that. We meet at least once a month to review our data. We are asking, we have tier one, tier two, tier three, so classroom teachers are part of that. We really want them developing relationships, having conversations with parents even before they reach that 10%. So just trying to be proactive and working together with families and with kids. When a student has reached 10%, families get a letter. 15% of the day is absent. Heather schedules a meeting with the family and they work on an attendance success plan with the family. And then at 20%, we contact the county attorney. Kristen has also been keeping our assistant county attorney, James, updated on just on all students that have been receiving letters. And then what meetings are we having? So we have that data there. As of November 4th, we've sent 45 letters, had five student success plan meetings, and then zero referrals have been made for 20%. And then a couple other unique opportunities, I guess, our students, I don't know if you saw on the news, but our every second grade student across the state of Iowa, so I brought the books that you guys could see. You received the books from the author, Abby Obermeyer. And her family have a goal that each second grader in the state will receive this book. It's really Caitlin Clark's story, important life lessons, dreaming big, working hard, value in relationships, over winning. So their, like I said, their goal was, they really just want to get that in the hands of kids. And our second grade students were excited to get a copy of this. They got to enjoy a little video from the author. And so that was a good thing. And then lastly, our fifth and sixth grade students had opportunity to attend Wild About Education. There were over 6,000 students in attendance and they had opportunity to just learn more about this sort of hobby, just fun and educational games. They watched the science experiments. They were really excited when they got on the Jumbotron. So that was a big deal. But overall, the kids were just really well behaved, so that was good. Oh, and then also Veterans Day. We coordinated our Veterans Day celebration with our High Five Friday. And so that was actually on November 9th, and then we held a short presentation. The veterans got to introduce themselves, what branch they served, and then students were able to thank them with a high five for their service on the way out. So. Questions for me?
I wouldn't say questions, but just a huge shout out to the staff and the team. I mean, on the scores, that's a huge accomplishment. And so I think the comment about taking a little bit of time to celebrate and make sure that that's a reward for sure. I don't know how you say thank you well, you know, enough for all of the work that went into that. But to jump that many levels in a year is a big deal. So on behalf of me and I think the entire board, big accomplishment and job well done on getting that done.
All right. 712 building, one of the things that I wanted to highlight first was we just got our, we got our results from taking our math testing last month. And, you know, for us, I've talked about this before, it's kind of our preliminary testing before we get to, you know, state tests and things later on. You can kind of catch things a little bit earlier, look at how well your English department is doing in science, math, look at each one of those. I actually, looking at this a little bit more today, found some ones that were comparisons from last year. So it's good to look at these ones too. And really, when you're looking at these, what you want to see more of is the, that yellow, green, and blue. Like those are your students that are in those, those three higher bands are definitely like, you know, your higher performing ones. And you want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we lower the ones in those, in that red and orange bands there when we're looking at that. But what I, what I was just talking about is I wish I would have put in here that from the fall of this year to the fall of previous year, all of the scores, so of the overalls, the percentages overall, were higher in reading, math, and science. Science one, I guess I shouldn't say higher, it was like, is that the exact same? And I'm going to blame our seniors who didn't take it because they did really, really good on it last year. It's good to have those things too, but, but one promising thing, like I said, is that you can look from last year's to this year's and see that we were higher overall performing, which is that if for each one of these that I shared, like the reading, math, and science, the top one that you look at where it says all grades and then that 52nd percentile, 54th, those are like where we were at for all classes put together and like what percentile or like where we achieved overall. So that when I was looking for comparison, that's the one that I looked at. Out of this, we usually get a little bit more like broken down data that we can have. What areas of math are we struggling with more? What, like it has a little bit more than this, but that's a good overview to share out for those ones. The next thing that I talked about in there was our Veterans Day program that we had last Monday for Veterans Day. There we had our foods classes put out, our charcuterie board. They had two tables lined up with just food for all the veterans, people that came in. Before that, the kids did a great job with that. There was, all the seventh and eighth graders were the ones that really put this together. So they were the ones actually greeting the veterans and talking with them beforehand. They actually put together the actual, the program that was in the small gym. And we had one of the parents of an eighth grader come in who was a veteran come in and speak. Overall, it's just, it's a great way to kind of honor our veterans in the middle school and our high school foods classes did a good job. We just had last Pride Insider, we just had the play. I didn't have very much to put in there yet because I was just, I knew we'd be talking about it when we came here. I thought the kids did an excellent job. I might be a little biased because I'm not, you know, like, I want to see these kids succeed. And it's great to see them, you know, do a good job, but I thought they did an excellent job. And there's some kids in there that you get to see them kind of come out of their shell a little bit and find the thing that, as I always talk about with activities, the thing that gets them a little bit more excited about being a part of the school. So great play overall and a great way to get some kids involved. So I was happy to see that on Friday. I mean, a really good attendance on Friday too. I wasn't here for the Saturday one, but had a lot of people show up. At least three fourths, so almost all the way full. I have been collecting from our conferences, the data that we had from conversations with students, with parents. We didn't really get a chance to talk about that in professional development quite yet. But I've had, we've compiled it all together on a spreadsheet so that we have different things that we can see. Is there a common trend of things that parents want us to look at? Is there, is there a common trend of positives that we need to continue, all those things together? And I plan on using that there in future, some future planning and then making sure that our next conferences, we have things that are more related to future planning and looking at our, I put in there Zillow data. That's what our advisor group should be doing. I went to Mr. McCullough and just realized he doesn't have an advisor right now. But that's what our advisor and teachers should be doing with their students is it's like future planning for them and look at different jobs. And it's a more in-depth way to look at what are the careers and what does it take to get into that career? And salaries and everything else that kids are going to be interested in when they're thinking about that for the future. But I want to be able to use that at the next conferences and then also use what we have right now to plan things in professional development. This last Wednesday, the last thing that I had on there was we had a career and technical education advisory meeting. So we invited members of the community to come and had a pretty decent showing. And I think one of the best things about that is that when you get to talk to people in the community, you get to kind of maybe hear their own opinions of what they see from the school and what they think is important for their professions that would be important for them when I talk about jobs in the future, would be important for them to know. Maybe some minor things that we can change or some things that are good for us to look at. So overall, that's, that's what I got on here. Questions?
Questions?
All right, my turn?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a lot to talk about this month, just some things that are going on. And kind of talk a little bit about the performance profiles at the end. Tomorrow, there is a groundbreaking at the former middle school location in Sac City. The individual that we sold it to is planning to start construction. And we were invited to that, so I plan to attend that. The school board convention is this week and Lori, as of last board meeting, was her named her delegate. So she plans on attending that with me down in Des Moines. As the principals talked about conferences, the fall play, fall sports are wrapped up. A few things about the fall play, I heard nothing but good comments about progress from last year to this year. Because last year, we kind of started it. And this year, we went forward with it. Also put in, due to help of a lot of different people, Scott and Tyler and Eric and others. We put some new lights and sound equipment in the small gym that I think helped a lot. After the play, I had a few people come up and talk about those lights are nice and we could hear them this year, so that was good. And really, it wasn't that expensive. It just needed to get done. And who was, who was the individual that came in and helped Eric? Do you know his name?
With the sound?
Yeah.
Lee Roychunow, local guy that covers a lot of these things. Yeah, so he volunteered his time to come in and help Robert get everything on track and where the need would be and the right material bought. So and then Tyler did a ton of the work too with the lights.
So that was just a lot of small positive feedback that was good to hear. And if we could ever figure out a way to ensure that floor doesn't squeak when people walk across it, that would be awesome, whether it's a play or Veterans Day or an assembly. You walk across that floor and people know, so. And then fall sports, I don't know. Eric was lucky enough to go with our junior high and varsity football team last Friday with our other coaches. The IHSAA started to allow teams to attend for free again. That was something back when I used to coach, we went every year and then all of a sudden they just stopped doing it. And then we got word that they're going to do it for junior high teams and then I got word that they're going to do it for all teams. So I think the boys that went had a good time.
In the high school was only if you made the playoffs.
High school is only if you made the playoffs, okay. So it was a fun trip, right?
Yeah.
Good?
Yeah, it was good.
Good, so we appreciate the IHSAA doing that and thank the coaches who volunteered to go along and enjoy the day with the kids, so. Now the winter season's starting. Junior high basketball's already in full swing. Game's here tomorrow night. And the varsity practices, wrestling, basketball are all getting started, so winter season's upon us. Staffing update, not, we don't need a lot of things right now. And this is probably the best position the district has been in the last year and a half. We do need activity bus drivers. So anybody who has a CDL and is willing to take the 17-hour class to get their chauffeur's license and drive our activities would be appreciated. Always in need of subs. I think the principals, if we could add a few names to the sub list, would enjoy that as they all are nodding their heads and look tired. And then I think right now we're looking for one elementary associate and a part-time custodian. Reasoning for that, last year, we had a couple of high school kids that worked part-time after school. They all went to college, which is a good thing. Bad thing for us because our people are putting in more hours. Now we're hitting some overtime with the people we have. So looking at a part-time person after school there to just kind of reduce our overtime and fill that need that we have that we had to take care of last year that we don't have this year, so. And then a little bit about the performance profiles. We talked about the elementary already in Mrs. Halber's report, but outstanding growth there. And it is nice to explain to the staff, the things that we've asked them to do, do pay off. So and I mean, it was just a great meeting because that meeting last year was terrible when we had to tell them that we were a priority school and our kids tested here and the state tested here and that shouldn't happen. So this year, it was nice to have the opposite of that meeting that we had a year ago. And one thing I'd like to point out, just, just the elementary overtime, this goes back 2018. Just the designations for the last six years, including this year, the last five years. The elementary, at least through 2018, has never been named a commendable school. So this year they have, and that is great to see. A little bit in the high school, and I want to do some explanation here just so the paper and everybody kind of can understand what happened here with our high school. We'll start with the good. If you look at the raw score, we scored a 66.52, okay? So if we hadn't been designated or targeted in a certain area, that would have been a commendable rating just based on our raw score. So the, the high school showed a ton of growth from last year and actually earned a very good raw score. As the former superintendents know in this room right now and the principals and the board, you learn that if you're designated a targeted school, the state can drop you down a notch or two. And that's exactly what happened here. So even though we had a raw score that would have been a commendable school, we had a subgroup. And that can be free and reduced, it can be special education, it can be ELL students. But if you have one group that tests, that doesn't test very good, then you're a targeted school. And in our case, it was our special education students, those were IEPs, that did not test at a level that was at the state average. So we were targeted in that area. And we also got identified as not meeting the 95% threshold with the IEP students. So basically, you have a subgroup, a subgroup, and of that subgroup, due to different things that happened in the spring, we were unable to test 95% of that group. So if you look up top there, it says the rating category dropped. We dropped from commendable down to needs improvement due to those two items up there. So as we celebrate the growth of the elementary, I also want to celebrate the growth of the high school because the data shows that we clearly did a very good job last year with, with the majority of our students. One thing that Mr. Tedesco and, and Mrs. Spetman and our team will go back to is look at, how can we help our identified students next year, this year and next year, so that we can test better than we did this year? So hopefully, we don't have that targeted designation and changes our score, so. Tony, anything you'd like to add to that explanation?
I mean, I think you covered it pretty well and, and I mean, the overall is what I want to be at least a little proud of and something we can celebrate as a group, but, but yeah, you covered it pretty well.
And you should be proud of that. I mean, that's, that's what I want people to understand. Is if you look at the raw score, this building did a really good job. But we were unfortunately targeted in one, two areas and that dropped our rating down two notches based on that designation. We now will work with the state on what that designation needs for that subgroup, so.
Is it safe to assume that the lack of being able to find staff for these spots? I mean, we've, we've done a long time with having spots open.
We have had a high school special ed teacher hosting all year, I mean.
I mean, and last year and the year before, I mean, I feel like we've had a spot open for a long time. So it, it's difficult when you're trying to fill a spot and there's nobody to fill the spot because I'm, I'm assuming it's not for the lack of trying by the staff that we have because there's only so many hours in the day.
Absolutely.
So I, I get it, you know, it's, it's tough.
Yeah.
I guess is what I would say. I.
Our, our current special ed staff, they, they work really hard. They're just, their, their number, their caseloads are larger because we don't have as many teachers as we would like to have. So a shout out to everybody in this building who has worked super hard because the, the data is there that shows we're doing well. We're just in that area of special education where we haven't been able to find staff. And we're still looking for staff. We just need to fine tune some things there.
And I didn't get a chance to look out there, but I'm assuming this may be a trend across many districts that haven't been able to fill these positions. Or will become a trend for a lot of districts that aren't able to fill all these spots.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there, there's tons of subgroups out there that you can be identified for. And as far as special education teachers, when we have a conference meeting or AA meeting and people talk about what they need, everyone says they need special ed teachers, so.
I did some homework of my own and kind of looked at other districts in the surrounding area. And there are some other ones and they're identified. There's another district north of us that's identified exactly like ours. Our score is higher than theirs, but they were identified for the exact same reason.
Yep, and that's, that's just why I wanted to talk about that. Because if you, if you Google search it and you pull up the high school, it's going to say in need of improvement. And that, that label there is unfortunate, although it's true. It's unfortunate. I want to share the data behind it, so, and do a little explanation. So Dale, if you can explain that in the newspaper with a whole bunch of screenshots, go right ahead. In some areas, that would be the headline, and I'm just trying to explain it for people so they understand it, so. All right, that takes care of my report.
All right. We will move on then to discussion items. So I think we've got middle school softball and baseball.
Yep, so just before I introduce Mr. McCullough here, it was brought to us by, I think, the softball and baseball coaches that several of our conference schools play a middle school schedule. And several of the surrounding districts play a middle, a middle school schedule, whether they're in our conference or not. Currently, we have rec league ball that covers our seventh and eighth graders. But the ask was, would it be possible for the school to sponsor that? So we can have a little more control over the schedule and working with those players from the varsity level all the way down to junior high. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. That's exactly right. The summer, the baseball coaches and softball coaches asked me about this more like, especially softball. We have in the past had a varsity JV and a JBR. We struggle with the JBR, finding teams the same to have games and having the time to have games and then also just failing to fill the roster ourselves. And if our two varsity coaches could focus on varsity and JV, it would be a little easier for them and also improve our program. So September, we had our Twin Lakes Conference AEs meeting. And I just kind of asked the AEs, and there's nine out of the 12 schools in our conference that do junior high baseball and junior high softball. The three that don't are Altona, Saint Mary's, and then CSAC. So all the AEs, I asked them and they said they were all very adamant about that it's good for your varsity program. Because it builds consistency and fundamentals. The high school coaches have a little bit more say on kind of what is being done at those levels. And more consistent with a certified type coach, instead of parents trying to fill positions and maybe not knowing the game quite as well as another parent or coach or, and also looking at the state department. And I asked the, the coaches to kind of give me, and I got, I could read them, but I'd be here all night because they're very passionate about the reason that they love these. But the biggest was to control over fundamentals, knowledge of the game that come matching the varsity level. Number two, we would be able to help with the transportation issue that sometimes our kids suffer as far as being able to get to games and get to practices. We come up with some way to have a shuttle from Sac to like do the bowling. So then that would take the burden off the parents and the kids saying they can't go outside, they have to ride to the practice or this or that. And then number three is just the certified coaches, just more consistency in coaching, so that doesn't change. just the certified coaches, just more consistent coaching, so that doesn't change every year. Sometimes your parent is there for, for two years, and then you gotta be a parent. So then the coaches can work a little bit more hand in hand, our varsity coaches with our junior high coaches. And then the, like, the varsity coaches can also be able to come and help with games and practices. Our idea would be to try and have these games at eleven o'clock, maybe Wednesday or Fridays. All of our conference schools have said, if we can, if, they're saying is finding out as soon as we can, if, if we would want to go this venture, that they would all work this into their schedule. So even out of the other eight teams, we have sixteen games, one home, one away, and we'd be looking at a seventh grade and an eighth grade games and teams. So that's kind of the general, if there's any questions, which you might have, or answer.
What time are games at currently?
Uh, right now, depending for, for which one, for like junior high sponsor, that's what all of the conference schools do at eleven o'clock.
But like, what are we doing currently?
Our current is all rec program, which is, those are all in the evening, seven o'clock at night, eight o'clock at night. So, and I, and I brought that up to our AEs also. I said, is there been any issues with that, with how the games are played? And he said, you get a little bit of pushback, but once parents understand it, because we have had JBR softball games that are eleven o'clock.
It just seems like a hot time.
Um, what it does is that eleven o'clock is then you can find, we have to for middle school, junior high, when I say junior high, suddenly, for games, you have to have these one certified official. So if you get a guy that can, or lady, that can do eleven o'clock, they have enough time to do varsity. You try and push them all in the afternoon, but that's a struggle as far as, you know. So then, on the other side of that, we only have to have one certified, and then we can hire a non-certified. Some of the AEs have had some suggestions on how to fill those spots.
Is there a concern about finding certified coaches?
Um, we have a lead on, on baseball and a pretty good lead on softball for one and one. And we haven't even advertised it. So I do not think that will be an issue, but.
What does the rec board say, say about it? Are they okay with handing it off to us?
Yeah. So we had discussions with Brandon, and I had discussions with Brandon Shippman. And, and they both understood the reasons why, and understood what the school is after, what the coaches are after, and we would be supportive of it.
What times are you thinking practice, same time?
What, what's the date? I'm looking.
Okay. So, yeah. So the next thing we're kind of looking at is the transportation part. Eighth graders heading drivers in, usually in Lakeview at eight o'clock. And we would have a shuttle that would go through SAC, get them off to Lakeview, and then we would play Wall Lake on the softball field, and then the city baseball. And then they would all be right there, and we'd have one bus go in one direction. Nothing's set in stone. That's just kind of what I think about how we can manage that type of transportation and make that.
So baseball, junior high baseball and Wall Lake, too, then?
No. And I'm not saying it has to be that way, but the other one, that we have to try and have two buses go in this direction. So just try and use the transportation and simplify it. And the current rule that does have the Wall Lake baseball field and not charge anything, and there would be two, maybe one grades. So.
What kind of feedback have you gotten from parents? I continue to be concerned about time of day, games, I don't think I'll ever see a game. Has it been, have we gotten specific feedback yet from you?
I have not shared it with a lot of parents, because we just didn't have a lot of information to share. Brandon Shippman was a parent, you know, and her concern was, is there going to be seventh grade and an eighth grade? I said, yes, because if they, if she had just so many baseball players, there would be more kids that actually came. So that was the only concern that she had. And I think that is legit, agenda playing in the morning. But to me, work and every other conference school, yeah, that's how we do it. So if, if we want to, there's no way we can do junior high baseball, softball, and have the games in the morning. Because it would just be too much scheduled issues.
It's one thing to consider. This is a discussion item, not an action item. So now that, if you have more questions, now's the time to ask them. But then, we can, if you feel like you want to talk to the rec boards, talk to some parents, the next month would be a great time to do so. And then we could take action on this next month if, if we so choose. I totally understand, you know, Jim, you bring up a very good point. I mean, how many parents can come watch their kid at eleven o'clock? It's not easy. And then you look at the other nine conference schools that are doing it, that's what they do. So, yeah, it's finding balance with our programs, the coaches, the rec programs, and seeing basically what our families want. So.
Are you leaning one way or the other as the AD?
As the AD? Well, I don't want to create more work for myself, but I think this would improve our varsity. And I, I think just, just providing that consistency, if you look at football, we have junior high football. Basketball, we have junior high basketball. Cross country, we have all, provide all the junior high for that theater system to come in. Baseball and softball is just something that's got to be discussed. And I didn't even realize, when I reached out to somebody, eight other AEs, you know, what did they see as an improvement when I went to this? South Central said they don't know any difference unless we get a lot of people. And I, that's it. So, and so all the AEs kind of said that about their school.
We currently run two rec programs?
Um, it's, it's one rec program, but if they have enough for a team, they'll have two teams. But it's still kind of all they're running through the SAC. He still labels it as the SAC.
Because we used to play each other.
Yeah. No, we got rid of that like that two years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for now? Otherwise, I'm assuming we're putting it on the agenda for next month?
Put it on the.
Okay. All right. We will move on then to our action item portion of the agenda. First up is our consent agenda. Any questions on the minutes, bills, or policies? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up, we've got the state safety grant.
All right. Six point two is the utilization of the safety grant for improvements. The quotes that we have were in the board packet. Part of this, so there's a timeline that we obviously have to follow here. And the, according to the state and the federal government, we have to have our allocation set by December thirty-first. The vendors that we have, we had a few things quoted out by a few different people. The vendors that issued the quotes that are in your packet are on the certified vendor list. So that means they've already been vetted by the state and the government, that they are generally good, good contractors that the state believes should be doing this work. And in the elementary portion, we're looking at a couple of things. So elementary is looking at exterior locks as far as the programmable ones with fobs and some of the newer technology that's coming out there. There's a chance that we can even program a staff cell phone to be swiped, and that'll be their key to get in, because a lot of times people will come to work without their keys, but they never forget their phones. And so upgrading our exterior locks, upgrading our fob systems is part of that quote. That's the first twenty thousand dollars that you'll see. And then the next fifty-seven thousand is replacing fifty-seven lock sets. So if your memory serves you well, you will know that up in the SAC building, they still have the traditional brass turn knobs. We don't have the ADA compliant handles. And some of them don't even have locks. There's just no locks on them. So part of the safety grant is, the reasoning is to make our building safe in the event of something terrible. So rekeying this and replacing those handles and locks will be a traditional, will be ADA compliant handle on the outside, push button lock on the inside. So that means in the event of something happening in the hallways, kids or teachers need to lock their doors. They slam the door shut, push the button, it's, it's locked. For a while, and this doesn't even go back that far, because if you look at our new additions, schools went to the key in on both sides. So you have to have a key to lock it on the outside and a key to lock it on the inside. Good in theory, but what they're finding out about in, finding out is, if there's an incident in your building, the first thing that goes out the window is to find motor, motor skills that people need to find their keys, one, and two, stick it in and turn a lock and lock the door. So they're seeing a lot of schools going to the push button locks. So what this quote here is to replace all the brass door handles with ADA compliant handles, locks, push button locks, and then taking those nine doors in that building that were part of the new addition and going to the push button lock on those as well. Because right now, they're the key in on both sides. So although those are only a few years old, if we're going to have the whole building rekeyed and have the same locks for functionality, that's what we want to do. So that's the elementary scope. High school scope, same thing on the exterior doors, new fobs and, and systems for those. And then the quote on that's a little bit higher, but we actually have more money to spend in this building due to the grant. So the rest of that is actually replacing a lot of, some lock sets to start with, but then replacing some doors in classrooms. So any of the classroom doors that have the old doors without any windows, and if you go down the hallway by my office, and some on this room, there's a lot of doors that don't have the windows in them, and are just older doors. So we're replacing thirty-six of those classroom doors, hinges as necessary, thirty-six lock sets to go to the, the push button lock, replacing the seven cylinders down in the new addition, so they're push button locks as well, and then labor on that. So of the, the, the grant money, we're utilizing all of it at a hundred and fifty thousand, and we're looking at overage about thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand for, from Save and Pebble to do the project as described.
Out of curiosity, what kind of shenanigans can you expect with push button locks?
Well, we hope that teachers will keep their keys on them. But as long as kids are not watching this YouTube video of our board meeting, hopefully, they don't think about that. However.
Kids are going to need the board meeting.
However, they're, 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 I mean, kids will be able to go into a classroom and, and push the button and lock teachers out, lock us out, lock other kids out.
Because, because part of the advantage of having it is educating them on how to use that. So, I mean, you're gonna, you should be showing them how to use those locks, rather than keeping it a secret, otherwise it's kind of defeats part of the purpose anyways. I'm kind of just, you know.
No, I, I totally get that. And, and the, the, this Walsh company, this Walsh Securities, they were, they installed the safety equipment in Perry, where the, where the shooting happened. And, and I don't know how much of this has been told the community, but there were locks that were shot at that day and was stood, getting shot at. So he was very proud to tell us that, when he was showing us around, that these are pretty good locks and lock systems that they use there. And also that there was not one door that was breached that day with their equipment. So, and that's, when I've listened to people talk about school safety, it's very, very rare where a door ever gets breached. So if we have the ability, if people hear things that are not right, and you have the ability to shut that door and push that button, the chances are that kids will be safe that way, as opposed to, where's my key, or my room doesn't have a lock?
Yeah.
Then.
So I'm, I'm with you. It'll be interesting.
It's probably more in the elementary, you know, somebody randomly running through, pushing the door, locking it.
Oh, it's possible. There's no doubt about that. Any questions on the scope or what we're looking at with the, with the grant money here?
When were they going to do it? And if we okay it, when do they think they're going to?
So if, if you board approve this tonight, Tyler gets the joy of working with the state and the federal government on getting everything approved. More than likely, work would be this summer. One thing to consider is almost, this has been, what, a three-year process with schools in Iowa. So some schools have had their work completed, some have not. So they let us know that there are lots of schools that will need work this summer, but they, they would plan to do it this summer. If not before, I believe one of the vendors told me that they could start right away. I think that was the exterior lock guy sent the lock. Walsh, we're going to go on a list.
I'll make a motion to approve the safety grant.
In a second. Motion in a second to approve the safety grant improvements. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Six point three is an action item to look at the facility condition assessment by DeNovo Construction Solutions. As you'll notice, there are two people in this room that are not typically here. That would be Mike and Ross, and I will let them introduce themselves. One of the reasons that I contacted them was, there's, there's been a lot of work to this district over the years. We have new additions in both locations. We have parts of this building that are from nineteen sixteen. We have a variety of addition, additions over time. And one of the things that I have to do as a superintendent is hopefully continue to keep the property up to snuff, looking good, functional for our kids and for our families. And with that, you know, we received funding through Save and Pebble to do, to do that. That's our capital projects money. One thing I was having a tough time doing, you know, when I joined the, joined up the team last year and where we're at now, is identifying where to start. The playground was an obvious thing that we could do right away. Got that done. Playground's done, but now what? We have money coming in, we have projects that need to be done. And so when I'm working with Tyler and I work with the board, we got to figure out with money coming in, what can we, what can we do? How long will it take us? Right now, the things that are big projects in the radar, that elementary parking lot is one of the things on, on my list. And I know in this building, Mr. Tedesco worked last year, right now on the towers, we have, our art classroom is about it. So we're, we're functioning on this half of the campus. So, you know, having those towers back here, we don't necessarily need the space. And I think from what I've been told by people in the community and on the board, the long range plan is to take those down. So I would like to bring these guys in to give us a, a assessment on our, our current facilities. And what their corporation does is identifies areas in need, projected costs to do them, and kind of a, a idea on where to start. And from that, they're going to make that sound a lot smarter. So.
That was not it.
You keep the meeting going. So, yeah, to keep your theme of data kind of going today, that's, that's kind of what we're here to do, except for the facility side. So there's three copies of the same document there, if you haven't had a chance to look, but that's the kind of product we're talking about, considering that you would receive from us. And I will talk a little bit more about it. So our, our goal for you is to talk about how we would develop a smart plan, which is what we call it here at DeNovo. And so we're a comprehensive construction management firm. So we, we build things. But that isn't the only thing we do. And that's not what we're here to talk to you tonight about. We're here to talk about how to maintain. But that isn't the only thing we do, and that's not what we're here to talk to you tonight about. We're here to talk about how to maintain things. And what our company does in relation to that. Why we say that matters and then how you would get that actually done. And I, I, I retired at twenty years being a superintendent. We'll talk about that in set, but how it becomes a living master plan that's actionable. Cause I have perceived a lot of those over the years that we use the first year. Remember, don't do a whole lot after that. And DeNovo, we, we do things a little differently and we hope to show you what that looks like here. But I'm Mike Hardun, uh, we're, and this is Russ. I'll let Russ introduce himself here a second, but we're considered K twelve ambassadors at DeNovo. The one thing our company understands is you can see I was a superintendent in Dennison and slushy for twenty years. I was shared between the two. We've whole great share for thirty plus years. Uh, but I was shared, I shared between the two and, and served two different school boards drastically different in their names and the size of those two districts. Both very conservative. Uh, Russ will talk about himself in a minute. We'll share our boss in a second with Russ. Do you want to introduce yourself quick?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm Russ Ryder, a proud graduate from nineteen eighty one out of Long Lake High School. So it's good to be back home and, and I appreciate that. I spent the last thirty seven years in education as well. I've been retired for a year and a half and I spent twenty years, I'm sorry, seventeen years as a superintendent in a couple of different sized districts. So having the opportunity to come back to East SAC, what I might consider my home area, um, it's, it's one of those things where you always get a chance in life to be able to give back a little bit. This is one of the things that really kind of drove me to stay in touch with Nate, um, over the last year about what can we do from DeNovo to come back and, and help this district? And I think once you see what we can offer and provide, I think you'll be excited.
So some of our other colleagues, uh, the reason we throw those up here is, uh, should you approve, uh, working with us tonight, a couple of those folks you spend some time with. Brian Crawford is actually, I'll call him our boss. My sons who are full holder get a kick out of me talking about my boss now. Since I was the boss for so long, but he's a former school board member at Clark Bosiola. And so I point that out because Brian really pushes us and the rest of the team to understand the importance that schools, the publics have and the folks you represent and serve, uh, to make sure you're taking care of your facilities first. Uh, I used to always tell my board, you have to take care of what you have first. Second, enhance what you have, it would be your second choice. And then we talked about expanding if that was ever necessary as a third thing. But if you don't do the first two things right, public is never going to give you the okay on a third thing. And lots of districts make the mistake with that. And so Brian really pushes us uh, to, 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 to do a good job there. Patrick does an architect by trade and Connor, an engineer. Those would actually be two of the individuals that, uh, would spend some time working with Russ and I and Nate and whomever else you would have a part of really looking at your facilities here. Brian is a, a retired superintendent from Missouri. Uh, he's actually lives in the PCM district. That's where his wife's from. And so he helps do referendum support, those kinds of things. But we've done a number of projects. Uh, I won't give you all the stats up there. You can read those on your own. But I want you to know we're very capable and have a lot of experience. You can see the list of all the different uh, folks that work in our firm. We have project engineers, managers, site superintendents if we're doing construction. Job in the area, hardly not far from that, that, that far from here. We're doing a major renovation in the high school while they're having high school. So we've had to help them figure that out. We're doing an expansion down there. And recently, we're gonna start working with Madder. They, they, they want an assessment. They want to know where they're at. They just, they just kind of want to figure things out. So here's some of the schools, uh, that, that we work with. Like I said, Madder's not on there yet. Autonet would also be in the area. We've done some building for them. We're kind of a bus barn for them right now and they've done some facility assessments. So. You can see we work with some pretty large schools, the Gilberts of the world and East Union, uh, which would be near that Orient Matz, or district down in that area. Which would be a much smaller district. So, um, our company really does a pretty good job with rural Iowa. I think that's the area we get. This is one of my favorite slides because this says everything that we do. We're only gonna talk about a piece of what we do because that's all you're asking for tonight. But, uh, we're gonna talk mostly about the assessment, getting a facility's condition assessment, really seeing where you're at. And then helping you kind of understand what that is. That's that planning piece so that you can help prioritize. And then this bottom track is what we're talking about, which is how we make that a living document. We, we do things like referendum support and project design and construction, but we're focusing here is the conversation that we're having. That kind of gives you the full spectrum. When I say we're a comprehensive firm, we, we do all of those things. But our facility condition assessment is really giving you the data, you, not us. You know your school, you know your community, you know what your needs are. We work with you to get you the process to collect the data in that book. So that you and your superintendent and business manager can begin to make the decisions necessary for how you want to perceive what's important. What would be your first, uh, maintenance side of you would like to get taken care of? Because we know when the day's done, there's only so many dollars. And so it's prioritizing those dollars and we help you do that. Russ is gonna share with you a little bit about what that assessment then looks like.
So as you maybe had a chance to look at the booklet, maybe you haven't, I do have to step back here and just real quick. Fifty years ago, we talked about the junior high basketball program where it's starting up right now. My very first junior high basketball game was in that gym downstairs, right there. Enjoyed every minute of it. I think I got four points on the night and we are just all go happy. Ten year old gym. Man, I, I, I walked by that and walked through that here not too long ago. So I.
You've been telling your stories.
I apologize for the, the two minutes. I, oh, word log there, but been in the gym many times, been in your school many times and I appreciate that. If you take a look at what our assessment really comes down to, uh, as we come through and we will go ahead and, uh, take a look at all the items that are important. Uh, when you start looking at roof, you start looking at boaters and that might be HVAC situations. It could be the tile above you. It'll be the lights of your flooring. It'll be your exterior windows, rooftop to blacktop. All right. We take a look at everything. We then go ahead and we'll take photos of issues. We'll even take, I mean, we'll take photos of good stuff as well because we want you to know where you're at. And, and we'll grade each one of those items for you. And after grading that information, um, we will then also be able to put a, a dollar amount, um, to that. But the other thing that's important is we helped you and we will help you prioritize. We may come back and say, hey, these are three or four things. Could be DEA, could be security, could be whatever it is. We think these are high priority items for safety, that type of thing. And then we'll be able to step back and say, but the decision is yours. And we'll come and we'll do a workshop, um, or some, some, some type of a board work session. And then we'll just sit down, give you the data, give you the information, let you make the decisions on, yep, this is our priority. To, inside that document, again, coming through here, this is a district that we just finished up here at our board meeting last week. They got the elementary on one side. They got a high school over here. They got a whole nineteen forty, or nineteen twenty seven building here, second level, third level. And again, everything is listed right there, square footage. And again, all that information is there for you then to take a look at. We also will then survey your staff. We want to make sure that we get good information from the staff as to, you know, it's awful loud here because that HVAC system is just, they turn that thing on, wow, I can't, or the windows. Man, yeah, problems with the windows and it gets cold in here. There's a lot of, a, a lot of information, bottom line. And so we'll make sure that we'll take some survey results and get as much information as we possibly can. And also we just want to come back and give you a, a summary, like what you see in those booklets right there. And then good, fair, if it's in poor, uh, situ, uh, poor condition, physical life safety, um, accessibility. We get these ratings over here, our FCI scores. And ultimately, we, our, our engineer, our architects come in and they, they do a great job. They really do. Again, taking that information, we just be able, are able to come back, put it in front of you and then make those decisions and help you make those decisions. Here's an example of one of the documents, location, what is the, the information looking for, electrical plumbing mechanical, what's going wrong? What building? And then all of a sudden over here, more data, more data, more data. It's poor, it's good, it's fair. What would be the cost for replacement? What would be the cost to fix it? That type of thing. Okay? And I just hit the wrong button.
Call help your ass.
Help me out there, partner.
Not a problem.
One more? Next one. Here's a prioritized sheet that we would give a board numbers. All right. So once we identify X number of items, you go through each one of you. Here they had seven board members. Again, a rating, a prioritization, uh, what needs to be improved, a description, and again, the wrong. This is the, the dollar amount that you would need to either replace it or improve it. Uh, again, but again, that's your decision. Okay? That's the information we provide and we help you work through that. Mike, I'll let you take care of the financial.
Yeah. So, uh, one of the reasons you get a couple of retired superintendents and a board members is because we understand school finance a little bit. And so, uh, it's been interesting to me. So I, I just started working for him here in the last few months, although technically almost a year ago, I think. But, um, it's the questions they ask us. They really want to understand school finance. They really want to understand what does a board want to know? And I said, you know, they don't want fast sales tips. They want to know, hey, what's the nuts and bolts to articulate? And I'm gonna start in rural Iowa where I've been all my life, uh, was born in Jamaica, Iowa. Boat ramp into Jamaica. I'm a YJV guy. So, uh, but, uh, uh, we would help build a five year plan. We've worked with Nate, your SBO. Talked about things you already have in place, maybe commitments you've already made. Where are those at? We know you're probably purchasing buses and training technology most likely out of the same funds that you do this with. And then so based on those priorities, how do we begin to help you design a plan, uh, that you can start to forecast out? It doesn't lock you in in five years, but it gives you a little bit of playbook. One thing that I like about this is a bit of a succession plan. You guys change every couple of years potentially. Uh, and so with the elections, uh, sometimes administration changes, sometimes school, uh, SBOs change. And so what a great way to bring on a new board member and be able to sit down with them and say, hey, here's the stuff that we kind of had as our top priority. So they all of a sudden are brought right up to speed after two years of conversations between you folks have had. To be able to do that. At the same point, when you bring on a new superintendent or a new SBO, they have a little bit of a track record of where you're at and where you're hoping to, to go. Or president gets to sit down with them and say, hey, here's our facilities and where we're at. So this can stay living, uh, to be able to do that. And so, uh, if you would so choose, it's, it's not part of it tonight, but if you want to choose, we come back once a year and we help you continue. We'll help you build a five year plan, but we can also come back once a year and make it a living document. So you always have five years.
I got a problem to come back twice.
So here's what that would look like for you. Uh, should you decide to move ahead with this, we would start probably working already in the month of December. We'd take December, January, February, get the holiday in there to really do the, the facility assessment. Then in the early, late winter, early spring, uh, we, we come back to work with you guys to prioritize of that. After you've had a chance to look at it, what you feel is important, and then you begin to implement those things. And you don't necessarily need us to do some of those things. You might change the carpet out somewhere. You might decide you're doing lights, you're doing door locks, you're doing all sorts of, you don't need us to do that. You can just go directly to a vendor. But we'll try and reflect those things in the, in the actual assessment for you. And at the end of one year, you guys give us a list of, hey, here's the stuff we already checked off. We update that so it lives. And then you've got an updated annually. You've got a list that keeps doing that and then it just keeps rolling year after year. You can just see how that kind of gets itself in a cycle. It's one of the things that I don't find most companies do. They don't focus on the maintaining. They just want to build something different. And so we understand there's multiple paths here because you gotta take care of what you have first. You're ever gonna have a conversation or if even need the other side of the equation. And so, um, yeah. So like I said, that's our, that's our entire process. Uh, facility condition assessment is what Nate, uh, has shared with you. It's a, uh, it's, it's one item here. You can see that we don't do any reimbursables. We're a flat fee. So it's ten five, uh, to, to be able to get you in essence, the book of the data, the meetings, the priorities, the survey, all that sort of stuff. Should you desire for an annual process, that's something separate that can be added and it's just a one time twenty five hundred bucks. No, we don't do reimbursables. The stuff used to drive me crazy is the trip and some travel and this, that, printing, all that. Our company doesn't do that. It does also, if you're a part of the DeNovo's form process, it gets you our engineer, four hours at a time. It's just, yeah, give them a call and say, hey, we got something going on. We're happy to advise. That doesn't bother you anything. And then if we ever got on that top line, you can see some of the percentages, what that looks like. But that's just so you have some guess at it, what those things are. So what's in it for you? Data-driven facility conditions assessment. You know where you're at. Heard about data academically. Gives you guys the stuff on your building. Celebrate the stuff that you guys have done and it sounds like you've done a lot. But you have other things you want to do. I heard parking lot mentioned, some other areas. Let's get a list of what those things are so you guys can prioritize what's important to you. Gives you a multi-year living facility plan based on your vision, what it is you want, that is important. Celebrate the things that you've done well here. So you can report those out to your public. Obviously have your newspaper here. They get to tell you, hey, here's what the board's done. Here's the things they've already checked off the list. Here's the priorities of other things. All that's very important and transparent to the community. Uh, as you do that, because it builds trust. And it lets them show you're being fiscally responsible with those dollars and how you're doing all of that. And remember I mentioned our boss, Brian, who was a board member. He, he said he, he disliked more than anything playing whack a mole at the board table. Administration would come in, they'd tell us X, Y, and Z, and he wanted to know why we're, he just felt like he was constantly doing that. And so when our company expanded some of what we do, this was important to him to be able to address that. And, uh, we, we're interested in being a long-term partner, someone that can help you over time. And so to do that, that means we have to deliver, be a part of that, uh, process and let it move according to your pace.
And I think that's one thing about our company with a board president or a board member for twelve years, Mike and I on board as well. We look at this and our facilities and what we can do to help improve from his eyes. And, and we have some good background ourselves, but really when it comes down to helping schools, how do we go ahead and become more efficient? How do we help the schools save dollars in the long run? Those are the things that he and I both had to do for a long, long time, a lot of years. And so we, we have an understanding and, uh, that's why we're here. Again, somewhat to get back and then be able to help you guys, uh, if you're, if you would so desire.
Questions for our questions?
Something we've missed in it.
No. I appreciate the presentation and, and I think one thing I just want the board to know. Okay. I have a lot of strengths in certain areas and there's some areas I don't have a lot of background knowledge. If we were working on a house, I could go in and, and decide where we're gonna start. With what? Probably with the roof and then the windows and then the siding and then we go inside. This is a different ballgame. Um, I've already shared with these guys that, you know, we do have seven years of debt service, that this district is paying off. So therefore our, our saving pebble money is limited. It is what it is. Okay. Those additions had to happen when they had to happen. I totally understand that. But your whack a mole example, I think is great. Cause if I was to make a recommendation to the board on how we're gonna spend the next two years of saving pebble money, I'm hitting the parking lot. Up in, up in SAC City because when it rains, there's a lot of water in that parking lot. That it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't drain and it's, it's crumbling. So a study like this, like you said, follow data helps me be smart with my recommendations and also gives the board a chance to weigh in on what they see as needed because their needs might be they're a little bit different than mine.
Could be the boiler to keep the kids warm during the winter.
We need boiler too. But, but our boilers are good. Our boilers are good. So like I said, it's all important and that this stuff that I just don't know. You take a job a year and a half ago, I have no idea what the conditions of our boilers are. Cause in the day-to-day stuff as a superintendent, that's not a place where you stop and study most of the time. So that is kind of why I brought these guys to the table is because I think they could give us me knowledge and the board knowledge on where to start, where to start with what we got. I guess is where I'm at. So.
Yeah, there's no commitment beyond facility assessment. That's why it's a, it's a one-time, you know, we're reimbursable process. We said, we showed you at the bottom, we want to be a trusted partner. If you needed further business, we'd want to earn that business. And, and so that, that was by delivering. We done anything close to this in the past?
No. Not that I remember.
Not, we did, not, nothing full scale like this. There were bits and pieces of things when we did the project. But there was something when, that, when they went through the buildings with some safety things. They were laid out, but I can't remember.
It was more for, maybe more for like when we were doing the consolidation.
Of the buildings, wasn't it?
Whole great sharing, kind of trying to get people.
Was it then?
Yeah, but that's been a long time ago.
I remember seeing something, but it wasn't like, I, I think the difference was it, it was maybe done as we were looking at deciding which facilities to keep. It wasn't, uh, more of this, where do we spend our dollars, like a long-term plan? How do we, how do we budget? Like I, I view it as like, how do we manage these dollars going forward? Because if there are larger projects, we've got to figure out how to accommodate that. You know, and, and work that into our schedule with our seven year. So I, I, I like it from that standpoint as far as like making a plan. I feel like, you know, we've spent all these time, this last few years trying to get these additions done and come up with a facilities plan. Now we have our facilities. Now we need the plan for ongoing of where we're, of where we're headed. So. Now we have our facilities. Now we need the plan for ongoing of where we're, of where we're headed, so I.
I like the idea of if the board changes or whatever, there will be a document that was presented. And that person can go back and look and say, okay, maybe this isn't my priority, but it should be or could be or whatever. And the fact that you're willing to update it every year, the fee you're talking about doesn't scare me at all. I think the fee you're charging actually is very reasonable, so I have no problem with doing this study. As a good start for our superintendent and this board currently and the ongoing board, you know, as progresses, so.
The, the examples you had in front of you will probably take those with us, but do you still have the other ones?
I have the Osage one.
Do you keep that if you're going to the, the school association meeting this week, bring down that one so they can still see what they want to study now?
I would, you know, the, the, the one thing that I would like us to see is, I know he mentioned, you know, the, the tower, the old building. Does he, do you factor that into part of this?
Part of that, yeah. In my career, we've actually, yeah, my community said, obviously, we're very supportive of Indiana. We, I've taken down buildings in both districts. So I understand, yeah, what that takes and what that means. Even when communities are okay about that, but we would factor that in as something that's, I wouldn't call it a maintenance item, but it kinda is.
An option or something, okay, okay.
Congratulations that's involved. We do understand that as well.
Well, I've heard a lot of things by being on this board, but I've never heard anybody complain about the idea of taking that down, anybody. So I don't know if they're all gone or they never liked the building. I have no idea, but that hasn't been a major issue.
I worked for a district that before I was shared, I'll just say slightly because we wouldn't be able to figure it out. Uh but uh it's old building privately, the old high school. And uh then it got abandoned. Whoever they sold it to abandoned it and it started to deteriorate immensely with critters and everything else. They ultimately had to buy it back for a process, not for a lot, had to buy it back so they could tear it down. So um just because it became, yeah, unsafe and an eyesore and, and yeah, so.
And I don't remember that floor being, when the gym being really creepy noisy.
It's the stage that's bad. Walk across before you leave.
Yeah, it's right when you walk in the door too.
But we know you have lots of action or items here, so I don't know if you have other questions for us or.
Other questions?
And to be honest with you, I wanted to come back because I, I work with Denova. On the other hand, Mike's about thirty, forty minutes away. Uh I will come back whenever you need. Um he will probably be the gentleman that's more contact on a daily, weekly basis. But uh yeah, I wanna make sure that we get some back. Wouldn't see the Gilberts.
Nate and I used to talk on weather calls in the morning. He used to call me in the morning.
Yep.
He might for fun, so.
I can, I can throw you in the taxi if you want, at five in the morning. What are you doing today, Mike? You're probably sleeping, but. Go check the relux for me.
I was headed with my son. He deer hunts a little bit, boat hunts, so we were leaving one morning. It was one of those fog mornings, so I called the dentist transportation worker and said, hey Cory. Said, it's pretty foggy over here at the, headed towards the middle corner where he's not kidding. I said, no, I said, it just kinda settled in really then. He said, why are you calling? I said, well, I'm out on the road and it's old time sake, so maybe you needed to know.
If you are in the uh school association meeting this week, we'll hopefully see you down there. Um but uh yeah, no other questions?
Any, no, any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Nate just sent us a message or another.
Yep, I will do that. Thank you, guys.
Alright, thanks.
So we're still on six-three.
Yes, yes, I gotcha. Alright, so that is an action item if we want to move forward with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the facility condition assessment.
Motion in a second to approve the facility um assessment. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, now we're gonna go to six point four SBRC application for supplemental.
Yep, so uh this is an annual thing that comes out every November slash December, depending on when the state has the website ready. This is kind of a Tyler, Tyler's Realm type of deal as well, so if he wants to add anything, he can. Uh the first thing that we look at would be an enrollment increase for additional spending authority. May our enrollment do not increase this year. You can see that's the first increase enrollment is zero because our enrollment dropped. Uh the second thing on here is your open enrollment out. Increase for modi- modified simple amount or supplemental amount. And that amount is totaling one hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred or eight hundred and eighteen. And then the, the third item for the modified supplemental growth would be ELL instruction beyond five years. And ESAC does qualify for that as well in the amount of one thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars. So board approval on this means it grants us the spending authority um in these amounts. It should be part of the budget process down the road. Is that right, Tyler?
I understand.
Okay. Anything to add to that?
Any questions from the board?
I'll make the motion to approve the modified supplement. One thirty-eight, eight, eighteen.
Motion. Motion, just let me clarify. Is that for all, both?
Yes.
Okay. Motion in a second to approve the SBRC applications for modified supplemental uh for both requests. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next up we have personnel items.
No resignations this uh month, but we do have some contracts offered. A lot of those are coaching. And except for pot, the possibility of junior high softball and baseball, we currently have no positions open for coaches right now, which is a miracle, kinda, for smaller school districts. I don't know that I've ever been in a place where there hasn't been at least one open position for a coach, so. With these contracts offered, um Marlena Cruz, assist, uh assistant middle school boys basketball. John Smith Tyson bike, co-head wrestling coaches. Heidi Gutsmur, um the assistant musical this spring. Uh Damon Harig, boys soccer, Jeff Niehaus. A head, co-head track coach. To explain the track situation a little bit, the district before has always had a boys and girls head and assistant. We got to the point where we, we advertised for that. Ever since May, we've had that up there. Head girls, assistant girls, head boys, assistant boys, um have not had much interest. Uh as you know, Jeff has a lot of experience coaching track and he is willing to take on a co-ed program. The three assistants named there are also willing to be co-ed track coaches so they can spec- specialize a little bit in whether it's jumps or turtles or throws. So those recommendations there with Jeff, John, Taylor, and Abby is basically the entire track coaching staff. But will be co-he- co-head track coaches.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel items.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the personnel items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, future board agenda items and meeting date. Uh the next regular scheduled meeting would be Monday, December sixteenth. And based on what we discussed tonight, it sounds like a possible action item will be junior high um middle sk- or junior high baseball and softball. Uh I made this PowerPoint, but I didn't check my calendar. Uh but I am, the sixteenth is good for me.
I'm good as well. Is that okay for everybody?
Yeah.
That's it. Okay.
That'll be here.
Alright. If there is nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned from the regular meeting. And I will turn it over to you.
Yeah. Organizational meeting, as you can see up there in PowerPoint, we need to call that meeting to order. So now that that is done, I would like to seek nominations for uh board president at this time.
I move Jackie Mailer to be board president.
Second.
Okay, that being said, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of Jackie being president again?
Aye.
At this point, I can turn the meeting back over to her.
Choo-choo, railroaded right into that.
Yep, alright. Um do you need a formal approval of the agenda, since we skipped that, just out of curiosity?
I think.
Yeah.
I move to approve the agenda.
Just to cover ourselves here. Did you get that, Brent and Jim? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just to make sure we're covered. Yes, okay. Now we will go to the election of the vice president.
Technicality.
I'm just making sure. I wanna, you know. Open the floor for nomination for vice president.
I'll nominate Brent Holmes as vice president. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Nomination cease at this point, I'm assuming, so. I will call for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move to administer the oath of office. You wanna do all directors first?
Sure. Well, this has, this is split up by president and vice president, so I don't know if just do the one and then the other, or you want me to?
We've done this together before, but I don't know.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Alright. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president and vice president of ESAC County Community School as now and thereafter required by law?
Alright, so for the next, the remainder of the items. I believe we have the list on the screen for board appointments as well as time, date, and place. So if everybody wants to take a minute to look through those, we don't know if we need to make any changes.
The only one I have, I've not been able to make it to the county conference board. It sounds like a lot of people don't, that I have a yearly conflict with what it is, so if somebody else wants to take that.
I can do it.
Okay.
I'd be happy to take another one on, trade off.
Any other changes? There's everybody?
I'm fine with what I've been doing, so.
Okay, with where we're at?
Yeah.
Alright. So entertain a motion for those with the one change.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in a second for the board appointments and committees as listed on the screen with the one change for county conference board. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that is all we have for our organizational meeting, so I entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.